Chambers, please.
Lot of finger pointing on going in.
Can you hear us?
I think they're laughing at us.
You're muted.
We cannot hear you, Sheila.
That's a good thing.
Told you they're laughing.
Debatable.
So you can see my screen now with the agenda?
Yes.
Yes.
Thank you.
All right, the time is now 7:03 PM and I will call this meeting to order. May we have roll call, please?
Mayor Riekel, Pro Tem Hanrahan?
Here.
Trustee Britnall?
Here.
Trustee Glasson?
Here.
Trustee Engelhardt?
Here.
Trustee Poston?
Here.
Trustee Seaver?
Here.
All right, may we all rise for the pledge of allegiance in a moment of silence.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, to the republic where it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Please be seated. First item on the agenda is public comments. Persons desiring to make public comment on items not on the agenda, please activate the raise hand function in the meeting program. Sheila, did we have any phone calls or emails?
No, I did not hear from anyone today.
Do we have any raised hands?
I do not show any raised hands.
Anyone signed in?
No, sir.
All right. Next item on the agenda is the consent agenda, which includes the minutes of the September 9, 2024 Board of Trustees Meeting, consciously crafted doing business as Haikyuu Silt Retail Marijuana License Renewal and Resolution Number 33 Series 2024, a resolution supporting the submission of a non-motorized trails grant application in the amount of $45,000 to Colorado Parks and Wildlife for the purpose of developing a conceptual plan for a trail system to access public lands near the town of Silt, Garfield County, State of Colorado. And I will turn this over to us. Does anybody have any concerns or questions about it? I do have some comments for the mayor, from the mayor, rather, that I want to read into the record, but I wanted to give everybody else a chance to speak up on any of these items.
Go ahead and read that first, I think.
Okay. Then I'll read Mayor Riekel's comments into the record. It relates to the last item, the Resolution Number 33 Series 2024. He says, and I quote, "I am not in favor of the application for the CPW grant for non-motorized trails unless it is amended to include language that there will not be any closure or limitations on existing motorized uses within the same area. Too often, once non-motorized uses are implemented, closures to motorized uses in that area are removed, which is a disgrace to public lands that should be available to everyone through whichever mode they choose," end quote.
And I guess my question to Mayor Riekel's comment is, this is just a planning thing, correct? I mean, we're not at the stage where things are going to be, where things that are, you know, motorized could be closed off. I mean, it's not...
It is a conceptual planning grant. It's being written because we do not, the town currently has no access, trail access to the BLM lands north of town. There's been some conversation about mountain biking trails, other, you know, trails that would open that land up and then ultimately kind of in the grand dream scheme, connect the mountain biking trails that are in Rifle to Silt, to also to Newcastle, to create more of a destination, so to speak, of folks that would want to use the trails for non-motorized purposes. You know, the mayor raises a reasonable question that, you know, this resolution could certainly be amended to talk about motorized use of trails and that, and then that already exist in some of those areas, but then add an additional clause under the be it resolved to say that, you know, we don't support the elimination of the use of motorized trail use. It's just that this grant is for non-motorized use only.
Okay. I just, I mean, he has a valid point. I just wanted to make sure, because I, you know, I'm all for trails and everything in the area, but I just want to make sure there isn't something hidden in there that actually winds up doing what, you know, the mayor doesn't want to do.
Not that I am aware of.
No hiding would be happening yet. That's later in the planning part.
Yeah, something like that.
Can we find out if there's a grant for motorized use cases? This one is specific to non-motorized. I'm wondering if they did that because there was already an existing one for other use cases.
We can find out. I don't know off the top of my head.
Because my, my guess, my reasoning for asking the question would be if there is one, then we should fund both, or we should go after both grants. To the mayor's point, let's at least take a look through the wide angle lens and say, what is the possibility of motorized as well as non-motorized use?
I think there's already motorized trails that have been developed up in the BLM lands north of town.
And we can connect to them from town?
Yes.
Just by ROHV policies on the roads themselves?
Correct.
In theory, you could do the same thing on a pedal bike.
But there are no non-motorized trails on the BLM lands currently.
And then this is, what is our portion of it again?
15,000.
15,000.
Fifteen.
It's a total, it's a total grant ask, or a project ask of $60,000. Forty-five funded by the non-motorized grant, 15 by the town.
So maybe per your earlier comment, Jim, the mayor's questions, you answered it in the sense that the access is already granted for motorized use. So it's not that this is excluding it, it's that it was already in place, so there's no need to have it here.
I think the mayor's just worried that his comment is based off of concern that once non-motorized is developed in the area, then there would be a push to restrict the existing motorized because, to benefit the non-motorized.
And I think there are plenty of valid use cases where they're complementary, not exclusionary.
If we do the planning correctly.
A bit Moab.
Yeah. If you do the planning correctly.
It's a different place, but, I mean, they do a really good job of differentiating the use cases, but not excluding either.
And that's, yeah.
Well, and this, I mean, it's pretty specific. It says to Colorado Parks and Wildlife for access to those lands. For, so, I mean, it's not necessarily just, I wouldn't think that gives it license to just veer off into any motorized access either. It would just be, you know, for a specific purpose, I guess, is my thought, but, I don't know. I mean, I think either way, I agree. If we plan it right, it doesn't have to interfere with the motorized access, but...
Okay.
I mean, yeah, I mean, I don't really like, you know, spending, you know, town dollars on areas outside of town, but, you know, like I said before, I'm still, I think trails in the area are a good thing, so.
And tourism's growing and we see how it's benefited our neighbor communities. I think there's a longer tail upside to that spend. Okay, does anybody want to make a motion?
Since Deputy Clerk Lori is here to answer questions, are Haikyuu, they're all paid up on their sales tax.
They are completely current. The only thing that we're basically waiting for at this point is for the special use permit to be approved. It expires on the 14th of October. The application is in, it's set to be spurred before the planning commission on the first.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions, comments, or does someone want to make a motion?
Mr. Pro, Mr. Mayor Pro, God.
Staircase is fine.
Pro Tem Hanrahan, I would like to make a motion to approve the consent agenda as written.
Second.
All right, we have a motion by trustee Klassen, segmented by trustee Britnall to approve the consent agenda as presented. May we have a vote, please? All those in favor? Aye. Any opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Does anyone have any conflicts of interest with any agenda items this evening?
Not here.
No, sir.
Does staff have any agenda changes this evening?
We do not.
Any members of the trustees have any agenda changes this evening?
No, sir.
All right. Next item on the agenda is the Silt Hay Day 2024 update with Peggy Swank. I will turn this over to manager ma'am.
I will just turn it right over to the executive director of Silt Hay Day, Peggy Swank.
I am just one of the committee.
Regale us on another successful year.
I am Peggy Swank. I live at 20 Lone Pinyon, just up on the mesa, just north of Silt. I've been involved with Silt Hay Day for a lot of years, and tonight I just want to give you an update as to what went on with Hay Day this year. We thank you for your support. This is our 54th year, so the committee feels that this has been the most successful Hay Day since we have moved back to Veterans Park. Donations have been up, parade entries were up, and we had more booth vendors. We now have our own webpage, www.silthayday.com, as well as the previously existing Facebook page. We had 32 booths this year, as well as 33 parade entries. This may be due to the fact that this year we carefully chose our event dates so that it wouldn't land on any of the other close by events. Having the support of your staff in receiving and processing our mail, helping with signage, cleaning up the park area that we use, and setting up the tent and helping with stage setup was significant, as was your sponsorship. Actually, having many of the tasks completed on Thursday this year gave us additional time to hang banners and mark the park for the booths. The use of the gazebo for storing supplies before, during, and until we could get them cleaned up on Sunday also helps. Our flag raising in the park is very important to us, and we really appreciate the support of our police department in making sure that it happens. The town also provides us with insurance, security, the beer booth license and servers well appreciated also. The loan of the band shelf from Garfield County and the Garfield County Sheriff's Honor Guard to lead our parade also appreciated. Rifle Recreation ran our cornhole tournament, allowing us to spend more time on making sure other things ran smoothly. Our local cowboy church came through and helped with the kids' games. They had, they must have had 15 or 20 youth out there helping us with the kids' games. The Silt Historical Park did a great job with the breakfast. They've been doing this before I started working on Hay Day, and that was in 94. Cactus Valley Elementary and the Cowboy Church provided parking lots for the staging of the parade. We appreciated our bands, the Colorado Currys, 1111, and the Queen Bees, and our sound and lighting experts, Precision Decibel, which is a local business. The fact that we have associated events happening at various different locations in town during that day with, gives us the feel that it really is a community event. We planned the baseball and the horseshoes near the pavilion. The local quilt guild plans their show at the Silt Historical Park, and the Colorado River Fire District plans their open house to truck in the park with us for Hay Day. Our donations have been up since we moved back to Veterans Park. We sincerely thank all of our sponsors. Due to this, we've been able to extend the face painting time in the kids' area. This year, we also added a photo booth later in the day to keep people entertained until our final band started. We will be looking for additional things to make our event more interesting next year. Down Belly Septic has provided our porta potties and hand washing stations for many years, and now we are asking them to provide in three or four areas instead of just in the park, because they provided in our staging area, they provided at the horseshoe tournament, so they provided us extra porta potties this year. In-kind donations are used as prices for events and also go into the silent auction proceeds being directed to the Silt Historical Park. One of our biggest concerns has been getting a food concession that is willing to set up and run for a one-day event. This year, we had four concessions that are repeats and seem to be happy with our event, but our planned burger fries, hot dog vendor canceled at the last minute due to the fact that there was not sufficient power in the park to support both the bands and him. We really tried, spent a lot of evening and morning time trying to get a generator that would work for his facility in order to keep him there. Trent Heligan, a local from Culver stepped in and by using the grill alone by the Silt Historical Supply Park, supplied burgers and chips all day. Culvers have now ordered their own equipment and have plans to provide for our burgers and ice cream needs next year. Our event this year was cut short by the storm that blew in at 7:00. We cut power but spent about 30 minutes helping a vendor pack up and determining if the weather would clear. There was space for people to take cover under tents in the pavilion and the band shelf before we called the event at 7:30. At our end of year meeting a few weeks ago, we talked about things we might do to make Silt Hay Day even better event. It was suggested that we needed to make online donations payments easier, possibly approach Garfield County Board for additional support, add additional things to keep busy in the park, to keep people busy in the park. Between the cornhole, the silent auction, horseshoes, breakfast tickets we provide to the crew and helpers, and the beer booth, we managed to funnel over $3,300 to the Silt Historical Society to help fund their efforts for this coming year. Couple of times during the day, we were asked what could be done to support us better. We discussed it at our meeting, and our main concerns are water, better Wi-Fi, and additional power at the park, so that we might be able to provide food vendors with some power. We understand that the replacement of the gazebo may be planned for some future date, but additional power would be useful, power and better Wi-Fi would be useful next year. Silt Hay Day 2025 is planned for August 9th. We know that parachute days are going to be the following weekend. We don't know when the Garfield County Fair is going to be yet, so that's our only questionable date. It will be our 55th year, and we hope that we have your continued support as we go forward. Our committee is completely volunteer committee. We're committed to providing a great Hay Day. We have been lucky to have your clerk and a couple of your trustees join us in our efforts. The committee consists of Justin Britnall, Michael Clark, Chris Klassen, Tila Forehand, Amanda Fuller, Sheila McIntyre, Joan Nestor, Kim Price, Sidney Reynolds, Robin Robinson, Hope Stewart, Carly Webb, and myself. Any questions? I have a copy of my budget if you want to see it at this point. I also have a copy of the information that I just provided you if you need it.
Well, thanks for that update, Peggy.
You're welcome. You got one in your email, too.
Okay.
Okay.
Yes, thanks, and thanks for your 30 years of dedication and hard work and everything.
It's a fun event. And I heard from the Silt Historical Park that one of their members felt that it was also a very relaxing day in the park and a nice event to come to.
Yes, it was probably the, you know, I was there all day. It was probably the smoothest one that we had.
We've had since we moved back to Veterans Park.
Yeah, we had a couple of hiccups, but it was still probably one of the smoothest ones we've ever had in the Silt Historical Park. So very thankful and grateful for, you know, all of, all of your fundraising that you've done. And, yeah, I think one of these years, you need to be grand marshal.
Maybe.
How does, how does a grand marshal get picked?
The committee as a whole picks it.
Yeah.
We had Levy Burris.
Just do it.
We had Levy Burris.
She's threatening that she's quitting the year.
He can be voluntold.
But she's threatening to quit the year she's grand marshal, so we're going to make, we'll wait a while.
Okay, that's too high a price to pay then. You've got 40 years to go.
I got a few more, huh? I got what, how many years?
Forty.
Oh, that will make me 87?
I'm okay with that.
That's getting up there, so.
Any other comments or questions about our event?
I hope you guys all had a good time. I saw several of you at the park that day, so hopefully you all had a good time. It's just such a wonderful park to have an event in. It really is.
You will see it, but we are working towards a 200 amp service so that there will be greater power available. Our problem at this point is we only have a 50 amp service, and that's basically enough to cover.
Sound, it's enough to cover sound.
Sound and lights. And so we've already started the process to look at putting a 200 amp service in. We can do that immediately so that it will impact next year, so that they won't have the power problems. We are also going to be working with our IT folks to try to improve the Wi-Fi. Now that we've got the Wi-Fi fixed over to the town center, we should be able to bounce down the street and into the park much easier. So there's a couple of things that we are working towards that we know that would be beneficial, because we had long conversation, that are quick fixes before we get to the point where we're actually looking at doing a complete rebuild of the park.
And we are looking eventually forward to having a new band shelf in the park so that we don't have to bring the stage in every year. This year, it was sopping wet when we tried to put it back together, and it didn't go back together real easily. And a few of us don't have the strength that we had a few years ago.
Yeah, we talked, we talked about some of the workforce issues and possible solutions to that as well.
Yeah, it really helped having your front loader, or I don't know if it was front loader, it helped having that to pull it out. It's Garfield County's band shelf, but we provided, we purchased some extra jacks for them for the units because some of the ones that they had were really wearing out. And other than that, we're trying to funnel our money to the Historical Park if we can, just to make sure that they are continuing effort here in town.
That's great. Any other comments, questions?
No. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Peggy.
Anybody, any of you want to see the budget?
I'm good. I've seen it once or twice.
You've seen it a few times? Okay. I do have copies here if anybody would want to. Thank you.
Thank you. All right, the next item on the agenda is Camarillo Phase Two Infrastructure and Parcel and Ownership Request. Now we'll turn this over to Director Centeno. And if the applicants are here, would you like to step up to the main table, please?
All righty, I'd like to welcome Mr. Ken Ash and Nathan Bell that are going to speak on behalf of Camarillo Phase Two. I didn't go into too much detail because I know that this has already been approved and a lot of you have already seen everything. There is two questions here that they would like to bring to the board, and the first one is to propose a phased infrastructure that they're calling construction areas. And what we ran across when they were trying to do letter of credit reductions was that the SIA was pretty specific to say that it was a single-phase infrastructure, and it's made it a little difficult for us to figure out when we are going to be able to release credit back to them as they're going through the process of construction. And so after conversations with Nate and our engineer, as well as our public works director, we kind of hashed out, what does that look like? What, what would the town be willing to accept from a letter of credit reduction standpoint? And that is not little partial bits of everything, so what we don't want to do is get in the habit of somebody laid a piece of sewer piping, so now they want a letter of credit reduction for that, because that's not something that can be deeded over to the town as it stands. And so we kind of hashed out from all standpoints what that would look like, and it would be a whole, a whole section that has water and sewer, and it has asphalt, and it's ready, it's tested, and it's ready to be dedicated over to the town that if, if they were to leave town tomorrow, that portion that's already dedicated to the town or that we've released credit on, we wouldn't have to do a whole lot, too. And so what they're proposing, what they're technically four construction areas, the first area would be the, the Picket Lane area. They do have a portion of that asphalted already. The water and sewer have been installed. The storm drain, or the storm water is already deviated to where it needs to go. There is concrete, and I did not make it over there today. You guys did not complete the cul-de-sac area, just the, just the one road.
Well, yeah, so East Ballard is done at this point.
Okay. And then you guys are currently working on, because I saw forms up, so you guys are currently working on the...
The, the end of the week, Picket Lane and, and the parking area for the soccer field, concrete will be done and asphalt. Concrete and asphalt should be done the end of the week on that.
Okay, perfect. So, so they are deep into construction area one right now. Construction area two is where they're going to finish the parkland dedication, which is that U-12 soccer field. They're going to get that going with irrigation and landscaping. And then they would jump to the construction area three, which is going to be everything to the north. So they were, they were hoping to finish the phases to the south first and then jump up to the north, and that's where Orchard Avenue is going to connect through, and so that would be the, the next phase of what they're completing. And then the last phase are the shallow utilities. That's going to come a little bit later. That's not something that, that they're looking to have any sort of credit reduction on until much deeper into the infrastructure phases. So that is, in a nutshell, what their construction area proposals are. Overall, staff finds that, that it would be beneficial for us to go on ahead and, not necessarily call it a phased infrastructure, but phase our ability to have letter of credit reductions and releases to them based off of, the SIA does say that we can do letter of credit reductions. It doesn't specify when or how or what exactly needs to be done, so, and it does say that it can happen four times a year, that it can be quarterly. And so with that being said, we just have to figure out if the board is okay with the solution that we've come up with, that it's just in different construction areas and that it's completely buttoned up and ready to be dedicated over to the town before we release any sort of credit for that. And then their second reason for being here tonight is the town purchased, for those of you that don't know the back history, the town purchased a two-acre parcel that is adjacent to Camarillo Phase Two on the west side. Part of their, if you look at the, the map where the soccer field is, part of that soccer field dedication is a portion, it's the southern lead portion of our two-acre parcel, and then our two-acre parcel extends all the way up to above where Orchard Avenue is going to connect in. So the Board of Trustees had already decided that that southern lead portion is going to be part of the parkland dedication for the soccer field. There's a middle portion right above that, that town staff has been discussing, and we would like to see something like a dog park put in there, or the space utilized for recreation in some way, like an open parkland dedication for that. And then there's the portion above Orchard Avenue that, when this came in front of the Board of Trustees many moons ago at this point, when this approval came through, that the applicant had requested that the town give them those portion, that portion up above to create two additional lots in lieu of the extra expense for adding the soccer field on the south portion, the extension of the soccer field. And, and the additional infrastructure that they were saying they had to utilize to put in, to connect Orchard Avenue. At that point in time, the trustees determined that now was not the time to talk about it, to come back after infrastructure is done, and that you guys would rediscuss with the applicant on what needed to take place there, if you were willing to in any way, shape, or form have a conversation about what to do with that and what that would look like for the applicant. So that is their request. Town staff would like to... Uh, town staff would like to turn the conversation, we, we'd like to ask the applicant to, um, fill in any gaps that they may have. I'm happy to answer questions and then we would like to turn it over to the trustees to have further discussion on both, um, both of their requests.
How much acreage is that top part? Half an acre?
Um, it is.
The
I didn't see.
Town park was two acres.
Right.
Uh, I'm sorry, the town parcel was two acres and it's taking about a quarter of it for Orchard Avenue. So it's about one and a half acres in there.
Are you looking for an answer tonight on the, the two-acre parcel?
So they would like, they came in front of, um, the trustees tonight to open the conversation. But if the board doesn't feel comfortable making a decision tonight, we can always, um, circle back around to this. But I do know that the letter of credit reductions, um, was more of a time-sensitive matter that they were hoping to get an answer on.
I do have some.
I, I will just add that in the conversation with Attorney Sawyer, it would take an amendment to the SIA to.
So I've, I've got a question on that because the SIA does allow for partial reductions in.
It allows for partial, it's, uh, and, and there's some lack of clarity in the, uh, in the agreement. And Attorney Sawyer sug- and the conversation suggested that we should amend it to be very specific of what we're doing. And he, you know, and, and one thing, um, Attorney Sawyer said in the conversation that I had with him this afternoon was that it doesn't unplat the lots that are already platted. So there still has to be the security for doing all the improvements, but it gives you the ability then to reduce.
So that it, it doesn't unplat the lots.
So.
Cause the lots are already, the plats are already signed, sealed, delivered.
Correct. And, and, and in so doing, you have a bond with us to do all those improvements.
Yeah.
That bond doesn't go away. The amendment to the SIA would allow us to reduce it.
Okay.
And, and, and it's just a matter of getting that language in there appropriately.
Yeah.
So that, there, because when we reviewed that agreement, there was some lack of clarity in the way it was written.
And that's where, you know, working on in the past, um, um, you know, in, in, for example, in Phase One, which was a much smaller phase, but that partial release, which is what that SIA was based off of, was, um, at that point deemed to be, if you completed, um, the sewer main throughout, um, and it was constructed, tested, inspected and, and passed all of that, you know, back up to grade, didn't have a hard surface on it, then that portion of the project was completed. A request was made to release that piece and, and that portion minus the ten percent could then be released. And that's what that, you know, the, the discussion or the idea around the partial releases was. Um, I understand from the town's perspective and, and as construction projects, you know, moving forward is this idea that, um, if you have sewer or water there and built and constructed and the project, you know, stops for whatever reason and you don't have road over it, you still don't have anything that you can, that you can, you know, utilize as a town other than starting to build the road over the top of it. And that's, you know, the intent is never to try and, and have money or, you know, to take over construction because the town wasn't, doesn't wanna be in the business of construction certainly. But the intent is to cover costs if the town were to have to hire somebody to come in and do that construction. And so the idea of that sewer and water is constructed and tested and, and approved, it does exist there as a, uh, utili-, uh, you know, an item that can be utilized. Um, and, but because it wasn't phased construction for some reason, you know, I, I can understand, certainly understand that confusion within that SIA. So the intent of this is to come in and, and sort of clean that up and say, hey, we're gonna be done, for example, with this construction area one, you know, by the end of the week. And that's going to include sewer and water, which has all been tested, inspected and approved by the town. Um, it'll include, um, all of the concrete and asphalt, which is, you know, all of the structural testing is done or will be done on that, um, and then inspection approved by the town. And so then the request would be, okay, we'd like a reduction for this amount of these items based off of, you know, the construction, um, cost estimate approved by the town. Of course, you know, subject to the ten percent withholding on it. Um, and, and really to be able to say, okay, the town's good with that process and with these areas so that then we know that it can be a fairly streamlined process to be able to go in and say, we'd like to, we'd like to request a release on construction area one. And it can be a, you know, yep, it's good to go so that we don't have to, you know, come back in front of the board to request that release in any way. And really, we're down to the end of this and there, it may not seem like it. This project has required a huge amount of earth moving to happen out there, which was a bulk of the beginning of it. But as it comes down to the end of this and we're gonna wrap it up this year, to be able to, you know, get the ownership, some of their money, because they basically are having to put up double funds, one in the letter of credit and one to pay the contractor, um, for the construction of it, to be able to get the money back to pay themselves is pretty critical in this.
So, question for you, I guess, in your opinion, is there any downside that would backlash on us if we did release the money, you know, is there anything that would come back and bad, I don't know how to word it, you know, that'd mean me against us if we did do it?
I think it would just be, um, it, it would just make the, it, anytime we're not able to release something as they're completing it, um, which is why it's pretty common to have the reductions or the, um, releases is because it's, um, tying up the developers' hands. And so, uh, any larger project that I've been part of here, there's always been some, like some form of, um, letter of credit reduction or, um, bond reduction.
Yeah, I know there has been. I just was making sure we don't, we do it and there's nothing gonna come back to bite us, you know, that we're doing.
Yeah, I think the only worry is just, we're not able to necessarily, um, there's an incentive, like, it is incentivizing to get everything done and finished. Um, if we're not able to release letters of credit, they try to get it done a little bit faster, um, timely manner. But, but I see benefit to both.
Okay.
But, and then I, I didn't realize, our engineer, um, and I had a meeting with Attorney Sawyer and it was said at that time that we did not need to change the SIA. So that was news to me when, um, when manager man just said that. So we'll have to get with Attorney Sawyer and figure out what that looks like.
Did y'all talk to the same lawyer?
Uh, we may or may not have.
Oh, well, there you go.
So, um, so yeah, our, uh, it, I'll pull our engineer back into that one also, um, so we can all kinda hash that out and figure out what that looks like.
And, and our request is that we kind of have a real direction because like I say, the end of this week, uh, first of next week, I'm gonna have, you know, we'll be out there with, with Derek and, and, uh, the town inspector to go over all of the concrete and asphalt and get final approval on that to submit a letter of credit reduction, you know, and this, well, this one's, and, and the intent is, and the way that that is for, for that area one is, that area is, will be into and out, you know, contained within itself. You've got a full access, you've got full looping on the roads. It could sit as a project unto itself and not need, you know, uh, what would be Area Three in order to, to exist and, and, you know, start building houses on. And that's really the intent of it. And, and that's why also that progression, um, you know, Area Three construction. Well, Area Two, um, which is, um, the soccer field and park area, they're starting next week on all of the, um, irrigation and landscaping out there. So that'll be in place and, uh, they figured it'd take them a week, but I'm gonna guess a couple of weeks. Um, but there, um, you know, so that area is gonna be done and that's another, you know, big chunk once again into and of itself. If you got the parking next to it, it doesn't matter if, if, um, Orchard Avenue is in or not. It can exist of itself. And that's really where we're looking at doing that, um, and getting these areas. But it's coming up quick and so we wanna be able to, to have that, you know, put in that release, you know, potentially next week, the end of next week and not have to wait for another board meeting to see whether we need to do that. So yeah, I hadn't heard about amending the SIA and I don't know what that had even.
That's, I, I'll just say that maybe I misheard Attorney Sawyer and maybe he just wants some sort of agreement. But I understood that he wanted to amend the SIA to spell all this out. So we'll, we'll work, we'll work with the attorney to figure out what it is he wants based on the direction that the board gives us.
So I have some comments, uh, from Mayor Raico who couldn't join us tonight. I know all of us have a copy, but I'm not sure you guys, gentlemen rather, have, have heard them yet. So I wanna make sure that those get read into the record as well. It's gonna take, it's gonna take me a moment or two because it's kinda long, so bear with me. Um, Mayor Raico's comments are, and I quote, "I am not in favor of a phased approach to Camarillo. I feel this takes away the desire of the applicant to complete the entire project. It allows them the option to try and sell off portions if they run into financial issues. They should have went into the project expecting one hundred percent completion and had the funding to do so and not request a phased approach once the project is underway. There should have been a discussion at the start of the process. It also makes tracking the warranty of that infrastructure more difficult, having staggered dates. We've seen the issues a phased approach has with Stony Ridge. Some phases are incomple- are complete, others have had nothing done. Some water and sewer lines are in the ground and owned by the town now when proper inspections and approvals by the town engineer didn't happen in the correct steps. We need to hold developers to doing what they say they are going to do and stop allowing large changes mid-project. There have been four or five developers throughout the life of this project and none have been able to complete what they say they will." Close quotes. I wanna make sure I give you a, an opportunity to respond to those comments.
I, I, I think that, um, you know, the idea, first of all, of, of that there wasn't discussion on it to begin with, there was a lot of discussion in the SIA and this idea of partial releases for this letter of credit and the idea of having to put up a, a significant letter of credit plus funding the project. And, um, I think, you know, Nicole had indicated that every project I've been involved in, in any town around here allows that ability. Um, and also by doing it in the areas that we're talking about doing, those areas are complete and the warranty starts with the final completion on the entire project. When it actually is accepted and warranted, and that's when that warranty begins. So if we finish, you know, if the contractor finishes sewer line in, as he did November of twenty twenty-three, is, it doesn't go under warranty until all of Camarillo Phase Two is accepted by the town. So that's more on the, the developer and the contractors' owners because they've got that extra year potentially of having infrastructure in the ground before the warranty starts. Um, and, and so if all projects were like that, it would make it almost impossible for, you know, m- mid-sized developers to come in and do anything in the town. And I think that's, you know, something important to recognize. Um, and I guess the last thing is that each piece of this could exist and survive into and of, by itself, whether the next piece is done or not.
So, I guess, so you have four phases or two? Because the colors look like it's two, but you have four phases. And then my question is, like on construction area three, water, sewer, storm, concrete and asphalt. So if that's a, so if that's a phase and then construction area four, that's another phase, it says all shallow utilities and irrigation. So my question is, why would you just not put the irrigation in when you did the water, storm, sewer and all that? Why, why, why would that be considered a separate thing and why is it not?
Because we have to, so we can't put irrigation, sort of the, the steps in the, in the construction process is we get all the road. We have to get, um, all of the concrete in and then Excel will come in and put in the gas and electric and we'll do Comcast at the same time. And so we can't do, Excel won't come in till all concrete is done and finished on it. And Excel is already paid and contracted. They do all their own work at this point. And then we can't do irrigation until Excel is done on it. So it's, it's one of those, really it's steps. They'll happen at this point, just boom, 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 as far as that goes. But it doesn't, you know, Excel's already been paid and that LLC piece has been leased. Because it does allow in the SIA, once you pay a utility contractor a full payment for their construction, to pull that out of the letter of credit.
Yeah.
So they're already paid, they're done, they're signed off for. So from the town's perspective, if we get, um, you know, Area One, Two and Three done and it's Excel left to do, you know, their stuff, Excel's gonna come in and do it, whether our contractor's involved or not.
Yeah.
And then the irrigation portion of it's just a very small piece and it was pulling that out just because we gotta wait for Excel.
Yeah, and I, and I'm asking that because I don't want some situation to happen to where everything's done but the irrigation and then the town winds up having to do irrigation. And it's like, that's what, that's why I'm asking that.
Yeah, and, and once again, the, the, the funds are still in place for the irrigation to happen, um, on it. The money's still there and that's sort of, I mean, that's the intent of why the town accepts that full letter of credit on it. Um, the town, the developer can't start selling lots until final acceptance by the town.
Yeah.
And the town won't give final acceptance until that irrigation's done. And so it's almost one of those deals where they're not gonna do two point five million dollars worth of work and not be able to sell a thing out there because they didn't do the last hundred thousand dollar, it's not even that much, seventy thousand dollars worth of work.
Yeah. No, I'm, I'm just asking that because I mean, the mayor's comments did raise some questions.
Yeah.
You know, as to why. And I guess another question is with, let's just say, for example, we, we didn't allow this. Is there some sort of deadline you guys have to get it all done? You know, just because winter's coming up and everything or does it not?
There's, there is no requirement on the, that I'm aware of in the SIA for completion on this project.
Okay.
But what it would do is, without being able to phase it, is from the developer's standpoint, I think financially, they wouldn't be able to finish parts of it without some of that release because of that doubling, you know, double cost to them.
Yeah, okay.
And I do wanna clarify too, um, so we want to work with developers and we want to enable people to do what they need to do um, to finish their projects in town. So this phasing is slightly different than Stony Ridge. Stony Ridge phasing was, we're gonna have Phase One infrastructure and then we're gonna build it out. And then we're gonna jump to Phase Three infrastructure and then we're gonna build it out. And then we're gonna jump to Phase Two is how Stony Ridge went. Um, this, this phased construction is not that they're gonna finish this, um, first construction area and then start developing houses and build it out. They're just phasing the letter of credit reductions that they're able to get the quarterly releases on so that they can release, um, the funds that they help, that they have held up so that they can pay for that next phase. Um, so it, it is slightly different than the phased, uh, infrastructure or phased, um, building that Stony Ridge entailed. So it, they're not, they're not asking to phase their building. They're just asking to phase the infrastructure letter of credit reductions.
And really it sounds, yeah, it's almost sounds like it's more of just getting clarity on the SIA, being able to release some of these funds. And I think it helps, it's, and the town's benefit to the way they have this laid out. I like the fact that it's complete sections that would stand alone if, for whatever reason. And it's not just, as you were saying, sewer and waters are done, okay, let's get that released. No, let's finish the whole section, release the funds, then do the next section, release the funds and so forth.
Yeah, yeah, we, as a, as a municipality, we don't want to accept anything and release money that we would potentially have to circle back around to and pay money back into to finish it.
As far as the concern that the mayor raised about the warranties, as he taught, as, um,
That's accurate.
Mr. Bell talked about, it, none of it starts, the dates don't start until later, so it behooves them to get it done as soon as possible because you don't wanna have sewer lines in the ground for five years. because you don't want to have sewer lines in the ground for five years, and have not had that warranty time starting.
Correct, yep. Yeah, because there, we all, you already have to retest the water line, right?
Yeah.
Because it sat for too long. So, they're, what they've already been dealing with was something sitting stagnant for too long. They're already having to pay the price to go back through and, and retest it, and do the back team test, and make sure that it's, everything is what it needs to be. So they're, they, they hit an unfortunate bump with construction, but they have been making strides, and, and I have seen a lot of improvement over there over the last couple of months.
Can I, can I address some of the issues that you had?
Of course, please.
The, when we, when we started this project, and we were, we reviewed the SIA, and we'd gone through it with the town, we understood at the time that there would be periodic releases of the letter of credit. We, we issued a letter of credit for 50% more than our contract cost, in order to protect the town with additional monies above what our contract was for. So you were protected from a money point of view, not from a completion, a construction point of view. You're, you're plenty well-protected with the monies to complete any one of these pieces that are not completed, one. When we, when we entered into that SIA, we understood that there would be a release of a letter of credit quarterly. That's why we wrote the letter of credit the way we did. If it had been, if we had been, we would have not entered into that agreement if we did not have some kind of release of that letter of credit.
But that's not actually in the agreement, right? I mean, that, that's why you're sitting here.
No, it is, it is in the agreement.
It, it does say in the agreement that they're allowed to have quarterly, quarterly releases, but it doesn't specify for what.
Right.
And that's when we met with their engineer and our engineer, and Public Works Director, to figure out what would we potentially be able to release a letter of credit for, like the, the releases for? Because they had put in to have it released for water and sewer installation. And we said, well, hold on, we're not doing that. We're not gonna do partial water and sewer installation. That's what kind of sparked this conversation.
Well, you did, you did do one release of a letter of credit.
We did, yeah, we did the.
So there was initial, so we had a general understanding, and we did have an initial release. We applied for a second release in April, and there has, and this is the result here in October of us trying to figure out how to manage that. We agree with this, we agree with this concept, but I have to tell you, if, we would have never entered into this agreement if we, if we did not have some kind of release. We've had to put up 150% of the cost of construction in cash with the bank in order to do that. We certainly wouldn't have done that if we, if we didn't have ability to get some kind of release in order to pay off these construction costs. So, I mean, this, we, we are currently, if we don't get this thing done by, by Thanksgiving, we're gonna lose money on this construction.
And by this, you mean the release?
Huh?
You mean the release when you, when you said this, when we get this to our phase one?
I mean, on the construct, I mean, on our construction costs, because if we have to go into the next year, and we have to come back and do the necessary work to fix whatever went wrong, you know, whatever happened over the winter, we're not gonna come out, and neither is this contractor. So our schedule is to have this complete job completed by Thanksgiving. And we are pressing very hard, and so is this contractor, to have that happen.
So there is a deadline?
We, that's our deadline, a self-imposed deadline.
Okay, I just, I just.
Not, nothing that's been.
But a reasonable one, it's that they weren't throwing a dart at a calendar.
That's their expectation, is to have it done by Thanksgiving.
Yeah.
Yes.
And that's need-based.
And then some, you know, a little explanation on the 150% is that they went out and got bids on the project, and had a low bid that was about 30% less than the next bid up. And they chose that contractor to go with. The town wasn't comfortable with using that contractor's numbers to post the letter of credit. So we went to the next contractor's up and posted the letter of credit, which was about 30% more, plus the 10%. So about 40% more than what the current contractor's contract price is to finish the project, or to construct this project. So that's where that, you know, 150, it's actually about 140% that Ken is talking about comes in. So they had to post a letter of credit for, you know, what the, what the town felt the construction cost would be, and we utilized that second bid on it. I think there were four or five bids, and second, third, fourth were all about the same, and then the fifth was, he was gonna make a million.
By the way, we did have a little trouble having this, having this contractor keep up with the schedule at the beginning of this project. So, we've had to put considerable pressure on them to be able to get this work done, and get it done, and get it, everything completed by Thanksgiving. We've got a very tight schedule, and, and we're very close to the end of it now. I mean, so, and I, and today, we went over everything, and everybody's on schedule, and it looks like we're gonna be okay with it for right, at least today.
Other comments, questions? I know we're out of time, but it's a fairly important topic, so I don't wanna, I don't wanna move away. And I know you gentlemen are looking for some sort of a response. This isn't an action item, it's a discussion item, so I'm not sure what, what outcome we can actually provide.
Yeah, and as long as you can give us guidance, then we can circle back around with Attorney Sawyer and see what it was that he was thinking needed to take place.
And you guys had your own legal team, I assume, review it?
Yes.
So it sounds like both legal teams perhaps dropped the ball, no disrespect intended to Attorney Sawyer, but the SIA was vague, but neither legal team picked it up?
Well, initially, we thought we were okay, because we processed the first release, and were able to get a first release, and then processed a second one. And that's when this began evidently, and I didn't even know this was happening, that's when things began to.
And this project was originally expected to be completed in one phase, multi-step, but essentially one phase?
Yes, yeah, it's, it's a single, and, and that's what.
One project.
Yeah, it's a single, single-phase project. There wasn't any intention of trying to, to do, for example, Area One and Two, and get all that approved and sell off, and then come back and do.
Yeah, no, we planned on doing the whole thing.
You know, three, and so, yes, as far as the project's a whole single phase. It's that, it's that partial release allowance that I think has typically been dealt with just throughout the construction of, of these various projects, whether they were, you know, multiple phases or single phase or anything. And so that's where it came up against, what do we, what do we want to allow on these partial releases? And I think that's important, that it does say in the SIA, partial releases within this. It doesn't say completed construction release, it says partial leases within the construction. And I think that's where we didn't, we, we didn't fully vet what that might mean, with the intention of, over the course of, you know, a year and a half, two years' worth of construction it was gonna take, some releases out of that letter of credit.
Yeah, I guess, in my opinion, I mean, if the SIA is vague and somewhat contradictory, whatever the outcome is, I feel it, it should be amended. I mean, if that's what Attorney Sawyer recommends, just to get away from the vague and contradictory part.
Yeah, it's, it's calendar-based, but also event-based or outcome-based, right? There's sort of a combo of the two. It'll be quarterly if these criteria are met within that 90-day window, is my understanding. I mean, I want to work with developers, I think we all do. Don't take this personally, but your profitability is, is not the town's concern, nor should it be. That being said, it's a major development, as the mayor notes in his comments, it's already had four or five other developers who've tried. We want to get this over the finish line, for, for a lot of good reasons. And I think because of that, I think we have to update the SIA. We have to figure out a way to get these payments done, to, to get this over the finish line.
I'm concerned that if we actually have to modify the SIA, that that's going to push us out and delay things, whereas if, I mean, if the SIA already does say, I'm not, I'm not sure if it's clear if it needs to be amended or not, and, but it does say that they could get allowances up to quarterly. And, I mean, I, I'm hearing there is some strain there with the timeline, and I don't think, I agree that we don't want to put unnecessarily strain on them. And I feel like Director Santino did a good job of advocating for the town's interest while trying to help them, you know, do what they need to do.
That's a good question for the developer. If, if you, if we have, let's call it a good faith agreement, that you're going to get paid back some of this amount at some point in the future, but we don't know the dates as of here now, tonight, can you move forward with your project?
We'll, we'll move forward anyway, but it, it is critical for us to understand that we can process a, a release in some reasonable period of time, some, as short as possible period of time. We, we will, we will end up with a construction approved by your inspectors and engineers and everybody else, and, and it won't be submitted until all of that is totally acceptable. And according to this new regime, areas are completed, with paving, actually. And so, we just need to have some idea of when we can get these processed, because it's a big deal.
What would our best guess be in terms of timing, Director Santino?
If we have to amend the SIA, it's gonna take a little bit of time, so.
Is that 30, 60, 90?
I mean, does it, amending the SIA require a public meeting? So we've got right there a minimum, is that a 30-day, or is that a?
It's probably gonna be close to 30 days before we can get an amendment in front of the Board of Trustees.
And we can't release any of the funds without amending the SIA?
It seems like we should be able to do a partial release of some of it, because it's in there, there's partial releases are available. It's just getting that, so even if we could do something for Phase, for Construction Area One now, and then tie two and three to that or something.
Right, yeah, they're pursuant to the, to the updated SIA, but.
Still gonna have a bunch of their money, it's not like you're getting it all back.
Exactly, and it's a good faith agreement.
I was.
I'd have no quarrels with the release and some of it, because we're not giving back, you know, the whole works. There's still, we got a lot of money on the line yet being held.
Yeah, you know, and the last, really, the last release is Orchard Avenue. And we've got the area, you know, Area Four in there, but as soon as concrete's down, I think Excel is scheduled for October 20th to be in there and do their thing. And they're, I think they're like three days or something is their estimate for this project. I, I'm, once again, giving them, we give them five on the schedule, but I'm gonna give, I'll give them four and a half, you know, on the schedule. But, you know, they're gonna be, they're gonna be in and out of there before we are done with paving within the road on Orchard Avenue. And that's a big chunk, you know, that's, that's 50% of the project, essentially, is what you're looking at. So you've got 50% still in the coffers until that last release request is made on it. But if we gotta wait, you know, 30 days to make the next release, we're into the end of October, you know, or, then, and then we gotta wait 90 days to make the next release, because we can only, according to the SIA, do them quarterly.
So it's 30 plus 90 in that case?
So that's, you know, we're, we're into, into January, February, if we can do that.
And, and we've kind of got them over a barrel anyhow, so release some now. The next time they come for a release, and we haven't gotten anywhere, we can hold them and say, well, you know, wait, you said the last time you were gonna have this, so we still got them. We can say, well, you know, they're gonna want to move forward, so they get the next release on time. So I, yeah, I'd have no quarrels with, you know, because that kind of gets them moving then, saying, well, you got, the next one, you better, you're gonna have to have this done.
Nicole, what do you need?
All of that has to be done by them.
What do you need from us in order to facilitate getting a release done in less than 30 days?
If there's a consensus across the board to make that happen, I can reach out to Attorney Sawyer tomorrow and figure out a way, even if the SIA has to be amended, we can figure out a way to make this happen.
Right, we can do the release.
We can process some of these.
And we can do them in parallel with the release happening sooner.
So what would be the project completion tied into the release that would be aiming to have the one that they applied back in April is based on the completion of what portion of the project?
So they can request releases quarterly, so this release that they're requesting now is just for that first construction area. And then the next quarter, they can, they can ask to release the next section.
Or the next two sections, if they have them both done, but.
Yeah.
If they have both done.
If they have them both done. And, and these, so even though the request is there, it wouldn't be granted until we have a bunch of eyes on it. Their engineer of record, being Nate, he has to sign off on it. Our engineer has to go and look at it, our public, uh, Public Works Director goes and looks at it. I go and look at it. We have a lot of eyes that, that look at it, and, and look at the line items that they're requesting the release on. And we have a lot of eyes dotting and Ts crossing to make sure that it is exactly what the town would accept before there's a letter of credit release or reduction.
I'm okay with it. We're partially at fault for the issues with the SIA. I think we have to take ownership of that, and it is being corrected. I think we can act in good faith with the developer to get them this quarterly release, while we continue to update, amend whatever needs to be done to the SIA to ensure compliance.
Perfect, I think we will move down that, that route then.
What we're signing off on would be, within the spirit of the agreement, as they say, it's like what is already intended to, and it's helping them do what they need to do.
In the nature of their construction, they're not gonna finish a bunch, sell them to subsidize the next phase. I think that, to me, is, is a show that they want it, that they need to complete the project.
Yeah, we can't, you don't make money by, by building the streets.
Right, you can't, you can't sell basements, you gotta build the whole thing.
We can't sell anything until we get it all finished.
Right, and we're not helping ourselves, we tie their hands, I think.
Correct.
Yeah, this has, this has been going around in council since long before I sat here, so I'd like to see it get done. And I'm fine with the, with the quarterly release to help do that. Is, is anybody opposed? All good?
Perfect, and then their, their other request for what we're gonna do with the northerly portion of the two-acre parcel.
Can I, can I kind of respond on that? Oh, go ahead.
Do you have, I was just to say, do you have the next, I sent a couple of maps on that. Do you have that, the map that shows the park area and the Orchard Avenue extension portion?
Sheila's gonna scroll and see what she can find here.
Yeah, those are the big ones.
You know, there, and I, no, that wouldn't be it. Nope, nope, not that one, it's gonna be. That should be it.
Page 32.
We need, yeah, we probably need to shrink it and flip it.
Kind of those two.
Thank you, Sheila.
And then the.
Then make it bigger.
So the, the, and maybe I'll just talk real quick to the, sort of the, the.
Excuse me.
Process, so for those who aren't familiar, is, that kind of went through was, Camarillo Phase Two was approved, and it ended, it did not include that town piece, and then the, there you go, that's a good one. So the, the green highlighted area there, on the east edge of that, is where Orchard Avenue ended. And that was the approved plan back in 2008, 2011, 2012, 2015, 2017. So I've been on this since 2005, so, yeah. And, and then 2017, and that's where it ended, because that piece was in contention, and then the town between 2017. And then the town between two thousand seventeen, when it came back around in twenty twenty-one, town acquired that parcel, which then allowed this project, and the request was, as, as part of this project, to go in and revise the design to include the completion of Orchard Avenue onto Kim Avenue. And then also to increase the soccer or, or the park area because the two thousand seventeen park area was just a small tot lot playground area, kind of a park area. And that was it, with the intention of at some point in the future, there was gonna be this soccer field out there. Now that the town had the piece, the request was to include that, go ahead and include that soccer field area in there and, and go ahead and, and construct a soccer field. So the, um, the design was revised, the construction costing was revised. And on the current costing, the addition and continuation of Orchard Avenue along with sewer and water and utilities in that area was, on the cost estimate, was two hundred ninety-six thousand dollars. And then the park area construction went from about seventy-five to a hundred thousand dollars to two hundred thousand dollars. So there's been about, the increased cost to the contractor was roughly four hundred thousand dollars to add the town's piece in as part of the construction on this. And so at the time that that was brought in and, you know, incorporating the town, increase, you know, increasing the park to an actual soccer park. And, you know, the grading and, and landscaping that went with, along with that, irrigation and everything, plus the extension of Orchard Avenue. Then the discussion was, well, contractor or the developer will go ahead and bear that cost. But out of that, then could they get that additional area, which basically allows for two single family lots in there, is all that it allows up in that area. And they would also go through the whatever submittal process in order to get, you know, to process that subdivision. And general discussion was, yep, that sounds good, you know, we'll, we'll talk about it and move forward. But I think when we had that approval, the full board wasn't here, and so it was.
That's what I was gonna comment on, because I think Britten, you, you and me were the only two on the board at the time when that happened.
Yeah, I vaguely remember, I don't remember any.
I remember that when we bought that, we had a, quite a discussion on that.
Yeah, I was here, Sam Flores was here.
No, this was like seventeen, this was before your time.
Seventeen?
Yeah, this was way back before your time.
Okay, because I thought we just bought it a couple of years ago.
No. I remember we talked about, one of the reasons we were buying that is, so if you correct me wrong, we didn't want anything built on that. But they were, we were gonna let them do the street, but I thought we were gonna keep it all for open space.
We talked about that, are doing parking up there or something like that.
Wanted it open space, yeah. And, and that was, we sat in a, a couple of planning meetings. Because we had a planning meeting over, gosh, at the, you know, community center or something. And talked about what to do with this parcel, and that was when we were incorporating that design into whatever, whatever Camarillo Phase Two was going to do. And this idea of, you know, we want a full, as big a soccer field as we can put in there. Okay. Let's extend the road through there. Okay. And it's like, well, that puts us well over our parkland requirements for the construction of a town soccer field, you know, the full soccer field in there. The road extension, you know, by virtue of just extending the road through there, you know, and, and that increased cost of the developer, whether that would have been born or not eventually, but it wasn't on that design. And so that discussion in that general meeting was, how do we, how do we provide the things that the town wants? You know, absorb that increased cost into, you know, this developer's development? And, you know, what, what can be some benefit? And that was the discussion because it's single family lots all up above that area. And around, up around Camarillo Court is single family, around the where the, the bump out on Kim and Orchard is all single family. That those two pieces above are surrounded by single family. So if those were then single family lots, they would sort of just mesh with everything north of the road. And then everything south of the road would be open space. And that was part of that discussion. And then we brought to the board meeting that idea of this developer then going through the plating process, subdivision process for that piece to gain those two lots.
I remember that discussion.
See, I do.
The land was purchased in twenty twenty-two.
Yeah.
Kyle was advocating for a bigger field.
Discussion in the past, but it's because Sam was, because this was when the property was owned by someone that wanted to put basically a mini, mini farm in there.
Yeah, and then they had that truck.
We didn't want that to happen, exactly.
They're gonna do the trucks through there, the trucking firm, he was gonna build that building in there.
And we wanted the road through for safety.
And I do vaguely remember, because, I mean, that upper area, those two lots, they're put two, uh, single family homes up there. That's not inconsistent with the rest of it.
We talked about density in those, in those two lots because originally there had been talk of a duplex or a triplex.
And doing single family possibly.
We were kind of a hard no on that.
Yeah.
That it didn't align with the rest of the development or zoning.
Seems, I mean, doesn't seem unreasonable if they're paying for the paving of that road going across there and all the others stuff.
That's what we agreed to, that was the swap.
Yeah, no, and that's, I think I remember that too then. Because that, that makes sense to me because there is, I mean, because obviously, as we've seen, paving roads in silt sometimes can be.
That's what I hear.
Sorry, sorry, manager man, I didn't wanna.
Thank you.
Get up again already. But, uh, having them have that hassle and be dealing with all that is probably, I feel like it's not, I don't see.
And we know we need the road, we covered it extensively for fire safety, et cetera, et cetera.
Lower area though for parking or a dog park or something to go for that, for the soccer area.
Yep. So the, the ask then is for this to be turned over now?
Well, so the ask is that we have the agreement.
Just to confirm the agreement, because nothing was confirmed before.
Yeah, it was just talking, we're talking different things.
That we could go through this development process and we'll facilitate it. I think the discussion was that the town owns it. So the town has to be the applicant on the subdivision process. My, I guess I could, it's a minor subdivision because it would just be three parcels essentially. But we would facilitate it anyway. And in, in upon completion of that, two lots that were created above that would be dedicated to silt ventures.
The property transferred over, yeah.
I don't have a problem with, again, I, this was the agreement we made.
I remember that too.
Goes back to the term good faith. They've, they've been doing all this work on the field and, and paving, et cetera, et cetera.
To be honest, for them to do all that work and all this planning based on the, just a discussion about it, it shows that they have some dedication to the project, obviously.
Blind optimism.
Nice, yeah. And so what it would take is the town to start the application for the subdivision. So we just wanted to make sure that that was the consensus of the board.
Solid agreement.
Was that you were wanting to dedicate those two lots over. Are you wanting the town to cover the cost of the subdivision and dedicate those lots over?
The developer is already in for how much for the scope of work down below for the fields? You said four hundred?
Well, so the road completion is, uh, increased cost was two hundred ninety-six thousand and about a hundred thousand on the soccer field. So we're about, the developers about three hundred ninety-six thousand dollars increased cost by using the town's parcel or incorporating the town's parcel in.
And Nicole, what would the cost of this process be to the town if we were to take ownership of it?
Well, we have the ownership of it, um, to subdivide it. We would, it would be the land use process. Um, there would be.
Yeah, I'm sorry when I said.
Yeah, there would just, there would be like public noticing fees, there would be recollection fees. Obviously, the town is not gonna charge itself for the time that staff puts into it. So I just wanted to clarify and make sure. And then is there, if we are gonna deed those parcels over, is there a timeline in which you want to do that? Do you want to wait until their parkland dedication is one hundred percent complete and signed off on? Do we want to wait until all of their infrastructure is one hundred percent complete and signed off on?
Would they dump on to Orchard then? The driveways would come on?
Yes, yeah.
It would come on Orchard.
Yep. And, and we purposely, if you, on the design there, you can see that Orchard is actually full width until we get to the edge, the west edge of the town's parcel. And then we have to neck it down because the right of way through, uh, Flying Eagle isn't, it's only a fifty-foot right of way instead of a sixty-foot right of way. So we have to neck that, the, the lots down. But we left it full width on both sides because there was some discussion on, you know, what the town was gonna do on the south side out there. And so rather than only having, you know, on-street parking potential on the north, we left it on the south as well.
I would be okay with deeding it over at the completion of the park work on the south side of that development. Again, that, the agreement in general was. Yeah, and, and the road, I'm sorry, thank you. But if that was, that was what the swap was predicated on, was that the, the full-size soccer field and the amenities related to that and the road. Once they've met those obligations, I don't see any reason why we shouldn't meet ours.
By the way, just as a sidelight, if, if you think you could agree to that, we would put in the services under the existing, under the pavement for those two lots while we're doing this work now.
That's a requirement now, isn't it? Dig once?
Yeah, I was gonna say, they should.
Yeah, that, that's not an option anymore.
I know, but if we don't have, if those lots don't exist or we don't own them.
There would be nothing to run them to, is what he's saying.
Got it.
And, and I'm gonna put, also put in the recommendation that we put, right now, the design doesn't include any water service to the south. And I would recommend that we put a water service to the south off of Orchard Avenue just in case the town wants to do something over there, put a bathroom in it.
Park, there may be like a dog wash.
Yeah, that's.
I'm just saying, yeah, I mean, we don't know what the, we don't know what it's gonna, the use cases are gonna be in twenty years. Let's just put it in there now so it's ready.
Now, if you'd have a dog park, some kind of a dog wash station or something like that would be an interesting.
Yeah, yeah, that would be good to have it stubbed out as part of the agreement.
Yep.
Has sewer stubbed out too?
I mean, I don't think it would hurt to have holes, just in case, yeah.
You can agree to that? Or you will rather agree to that? Water and sewer?
Yes.
And irrigation?
And will agree to?
Well, irrigation is already.
Irrigation.
It's gonna be irrigated anyhow, yeah, for the park.
Okay.
Irr, irrigation runs both sides of that. You guys can tap on anywhere you want because it's out of the road.
Yep.
All righty, well, that gives us direction and we can start chugging along forward and figure it out.
And I'm assuming as part of that subdivision application, you'll just use our design drawings that are completed already for that, so.
Yeah, I'll defer to.
It'd just be a plat then.
Nicole and Planner Chain and whoever else is a subject matter expert on those things. All right, you guys have everything you need.
Yes, sir, thank you very much. I want to assure you that we're gonna do everything that's possible to get that, this done and completed by.
Glad more, glad to see the more than that little shed that's been there since back in the late eighties or nineties, that shed's been sitting there. I remember when they built that, that was gonna be their little factory. Remember they had their little, uh, construction thing there? That's been there since, man, that's been a lot of years.
Yeah, remember they wanted to tear, us to tear it down? I remember that part of the conversation.
They were gonna make that's, yeah, that's been there since nineties, two thousand, hasn't it?
Well, they, so they built that when
They did them.
We were town engineers.
Yeah. Oh, that little building was there.
That would've been mid-nineties, yeah.
This project's become a career for you. Grand opening and your retirement all at once.
Yeah, if it would've just paid for all of that, the whole career.
How long ago was that first building built?
Which one?
The one at the far end.
Uh, two thousand six.
Six, okay.
All right, we are gonna move on, gentlemen. We're running behind and Amy's getting very upset. She's just doing it quietly.
Just the little clock keeps moving.
Yeah, she, she's moving the red timer further and further into the screen.
She was being passive aggressive.
To express her displeasure with us. Thank you for joining us, gentlemen. Okay. The next item on the agenda is Resolution Number Thirty-One, Series Twenty-Twenty-Four. A resolution executing an agreement with Free Up Storage for the provision of water service to the Garfield County Assessment Property Parcel Number Twenty-One Seventy-Nine One-O-One Zero 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 One-Eight in the town of Silt, Garfield County, State of Colorado. And apparently we're issuing a continuance.
Correct. Again, we're working on this diligently as we're, um, finding documentation and working with Free Up Storage to figure out what different options they have. We are asking for a continuation. I did put a recommended motion on here for two dates in October. And we're actually gonna request that it be the latter date that, um, that this continuation.
You read my mind, because I was literally gonna ask which one get, makes it more likely that we won't have to continue it yet again.
Yes, yep. So we're asking to shoot for the October twenty-eighth meeting.
Things are, you know, going in a positive direction?
Yeah, they're, we're definitely working, um, to figure out how to, how to get to a yes, so.
Okay, cool.
Yep.
Outstanding.
Well, Mr. Mayor, make a motion to a continuance request to October twenty-eighth, twenty twenty-four of Resolution Number Thirty-One, Series Twenty-Twenty-Four.
I'll second.
All right, we have a motion by Trustee Seifert and seconded by Trustee Clausen for a continuation of Resolution Number Thirty-One, Series Twenty-Twenty-Four to the date of October the twenty-eighth, twenty twenty-four. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Uh, next item on the agenda is distribution of administrative budget, and I'll turn this over to Manager Ma'am.
It's that most exciting time of the year. It's like Christmas morning. Okay, maybe not so much.
Or at all.
We have, uh, staff has worked diligently over the summer months to prepare an administrative budget for your review. This is the kickoff of that process. I included in the packet kind of a summary of the general fund. Uh, all funds are included in terms of the budget worksheets that we included, but the twenty twenty-five preliminary budget includes just shy of six point seven million dollars of revenues in the general fund with expenditures of seven point nine million dollars, which is a one point two million dollar deficit. This is, uh, uh, something that causes me great heartburn. I've never presented a budget that is unbalanced before. Um, but the town seems to have a history of adopting budgets that are unbalanced. In two thousand twenty-two, it was six hundred thousand dollars. Two thousand twenty-three, it was a little over, or just shy of one point one million. And in two thousand twenty-four, our current budget, the deficit was one point nine million. So it moved in the right direction. Uh, but there are a number of things that I would like to, uh, just call your attention to that hit us somewhat difficulty. Our property taxes really are not increasing greatly. Sales taxes, we are projecting a slight increase over two thousand, uh, twenty-four or, uh, twenty-four. We are keeping pace and we're actually, and you'll soon hear from Treasurer Tucker, we're actually about one percent ahead right now. Our grants and contributions are about the same. Um, our charges for services have gone up. We've done some reallocation in terms of where costs are being contributed or attributed and basically volume of work we're doing right now for the water plant is causing the water utility to kick in more dollars to the general fund. On the expenditure side, um, again, I said we've done some reallocation in terms of where dollars are being spent, so you'll see some percentage increases that are kind of wonky. Some are high, some are low. But that's simply because we're actually making sure that the expenditures are being carded where they are appropriate. Not just because we've always done it that way. Fresh set of eyes looking at it. A couple of highlights in terms, or perhaps lowlights, um, for the budget. We had some rather significant, uh, insurance cost increases, uh, in the budget this year. Our health insurance went up thirteen and a half percent, um, across the board. We had almost a fifty percent increase in our property liability, uh, insurance. It went from about a hundred and. It went from about a hundred and forty thousand to two hundred and ten thousand dollars. And that is just by nature of insurance environment, especially for the property insurance in the state of Colorado. Uh, it does include a cost of living increase for wages and a a potential two percent merit increase. Um, the big one, the 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 highlights are the capital initiatives that we've got included in the budget for next year. Um, we are wrapping up our community outreach and should be in a position where we can actually start the process to do the community park renovation. We've got dollars in for Spruce Meadows Park renovation. We have a, we received a small grant to do some zero-scaping uh at Gateway Park. We're going to be eliminating uh much of the irrigation to that park. We've basically turning it into more open space as opposed to a park-like setting. Um, we've got the space needs analysis that we're gonna be working towards. Um, we have included dollars for the acquisition of the Anderson property across the street. There is some movement that might uh open the door for us to be able to purchase that property and start the cleanup process. Um, we've got a fair amount of police equipment that's included in the budget. Uh, the service rifles and shotguns all need to be replaced. Um, uh, so there's a, there's a cost associated with that. We've got the cost of the pedestrian bridge design and engineering that's gonna be ongoing. Uh, we're gonna hit thirty percent design sometime later this year, probably. Uh, and then we'll be moving forward. And for streets next year, we've got Eighth Street overlay, Fourth Street overlay, and a Ballard overlay uh that we'll be looking at. Um, that is the priority that we have them in the budget, Eighth, Fourth, and Ballard. So as you start getting into the details of the budget, it may cause you to say, ah, we're not gonna do all three of them at one time. Um, in terms of uh our process, October fifteenth is our first budget workshop. We're looking at starting at five-thirty. Uh, that evening, uh, the the plan is to have each of the department heads give you an overview of what they are accomplishing in twenty-twenty-four, what they are hoping to accomplish in twenty-twenty-five, and just give you a general sense of the budget. October twenty-eighth, we'll really get into the revenue side of the equation, spend a little time talking about your goals uh and getting some board direction. We'll come back November twelfth, implementing some of that direction. Um, uh, and and if you want more work, then we'll go back in and make some additional changes. Um, on uh November twenty-five, if uh we need that session, we'll go ahead and do the final review. And then on December nine would be the adoption of the actual budget. So it's a pretty intense month that we're gonna be looking at, because we're gonna be having a work session at each of the next four meetings primarily on budget. And we will have certain uh groups that are gonna come in and they're gonna pitch, please fund us at this level. Um, so you'll have some of that that'll be interspersed in all these meetings, so you'll hear from some of those organizations. But that's the plan. We're still, I'm still looking at it, trying to figure out how to balance it. I don't like unbalanced budgets. I know we have a rather healthy fund balance. I will, you know, quite frankly, it, fund balance is very easy to spend. It's not so easy to create. And so when we look at spending it, make sure that we're doing it wisely on things that uh, on items, uh, projects that are more legacy, not just ongoing maintenance or operations.
And that's where I think fund balance, that should be, if you're gonna do it, is legacy projects, things that are gonna be long-lasting, not paying your police officers.
Correct. Um, I have it in my uh uh report, but uh Code Enforcement Officer Waggoner has resigned. His last day was last week. Um, so we have uh some decisions to make and discussion to have of how we're gonna proceed with cor- code enforcement in in town. Um, I think there is a worthwhile discussion to have of whether that position should be located in the Community Development Department, or whether it should be in the Police Department. Um, I think there were some operational issues that came to light, and I think it's worthwhile having a discussion of where that position lands. It doesn't matter for the budget, because if we're gonna continue funding that position, it's still coming out of the general fund.
How how long was he with us?
Fourteen months, sixteen months.
Was it?
But not quite.
Oh, twelve. Twelve.
Not not quite twelve.
Not quite twelve.
I felt like it was last winter. I couldn't remember the day.
Yeah.
If nothing else, I think by creating the position and going through training, someone doing it once, we learned some things that worked and some things that didn't. So we can maybe have a better plan for that position in the future.
Well, and I and I think there's a, there's a possibility that if we, if the position moves back to community development, that, I'm not sure that we are in a position where we need a full-time code enforcement officer. So then that position could be partially code enforcement and then permit officer or some sort of support in community development that would take some of the burden off Director Centeno, because she's still working too many hours trying to get the work done that is on her plate.
Did we conduct an exit interview?
Yes.
Okay, so we have specific, we don't need to bring it up here in a public forum, but we have specific feedback from the employee about the why.
Yes.
And we're factoring that into the next instance. Perfect.
Correct. But that and.
Yeah, I'll always favor having a code enforcement officer.
Question, Mr.
Sorry, community service officer.
I have a question for you. What, on in Board of Trustees, what is included in that number? It's it's like sixty, it's got different ones, you know, in our pay schedule set. So I was just curious what was in them numbers.
The the difference is uh, there's a fair amount of dollars that are included in the Board of Trustees line items that are the.
It's not just our salary then.
It's not just your salaries, it's the, it's the funding of the various groups, like um the uh Economic Development Partnership, the uh the membership with CLEAR.
Then what's the contribution line then? That's.
Uh, maybe I'm getting.
I'm just gonna find out what them two lines were.
Just go back up. I have to turn my head to get to the right spot.
Turn your page in all the computers.
I know, but then I have to turn all the other pages.
Page thirty-six.
Technology hit that one button and it rotates.
Yeah, 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 yeah.
Well, he's looking at that.
Are you schooling me, Jerry?
It's it's no big deal. I was just curious what, you know, because there was the two i- two line items, I didn't know what was what. Because they're different, different years and everyone's not the same, so. I knew it was not just our salary, but I didn't know what else was all included.
All right. Uh, yeah, you have Board of Trustees, which includes your payroll, payroll taxes, training registrations, travel, uh contract services for public access, so that um we have the meetings recorded. Uh, legal fees, you have some special projects. Oh, the big increase was a a business improvements fund. You you have had in the past the ability to give some grants for downtown Main Street improvements.
Okay.
They haven't been budgeted in the past. We put it in the budget.
Okay, I was just curious, I, because I said then the next line showed contribution, so I didn't know what was what.
Yeah, the next line, sorry, the contributions are all the youth zone, the River Center, Mind Springs, Silheades.
That's what I thought.
Clean energies, Chamber.
Okay.
All right.
Sorry, Chief. No worries, I was gonna give you a little bit of time where you're look, try to find it. Angelo, um, CSO officer, has enlisted in the military. He signed his paperwork today, the paperwork, his paperwork today, he's going, he has enlisted in the Navy. And that's why he has chosen to move on. He's young and wants to explore the world. And the military seemed to be the best option for him to do that. And we wish him strictly the best of luck.
Seems like a reasonable or a good reason to wanna change the course. Yeah, the only reason I ask about the exit interview is that's usually when you hear the truth. And again, I don't wanna bring it up in a public forum, but now there's nothing to bring up now that we've we've gotten your feedback, so thank you.
I heard the question come across, so I was gonna try to get that answered for you.
Appreciate it.
I'm guessing you wanted to make know if, make sure we're not doing something wrong as a town that's driving someone away, right?
Not even individually, but the Manager Ma'am's question, should should they be under Chief Kite? Should they be under Director Centeno? Like, what does it look like hierarchically? What does it look like operationally? Do, does it become a split-time model, which we, which Manager Ma'am described? Like, it's just learning from that employee while they're on their way out the door and they're unfiltered? What changes do we need to make as a municipality to improve that role such that it works for us and them? And that is a discussion the three of us are gonna have?
Yeah, I mean, that's up to their, their, their employees, so.
And just so you're aware, depending on who you talk to, we're always doing something wrong.
But and and it was, I mean, the response was more intelligent, like, we're we're looking for feedback, obviously, and ways to improve.
You always get the most honest feedback when they're on their way out. I can't tell you how many have done that have been like, oh, I had no idea, because you never have the courage to say it while you're still employed and they're paying your rent.
You mean, it's easier to speak freely when you aren't, oh.
Yes. People who are leaving in CFOs are the fountains of truth.
Then you have one other question. The admin fees going up a hundred and thirteen percent, where is that coming from?
Mostly water.
Is that what, okay, I just, okay. And then fines are going up eighty-one percent. Is there, did we change the fine schedule or just anticipated?
We got more bodies.
Okay, I'm just curious.
Being more active.
Okay.
And and so we're we're reflecting our projected fines and forfeitures revenue.
One mile per hour of the speed limit, busted.
No, we're not quite that 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 bad.
Not while I'm here. I was just gonna say, not while Chief's here.
I think you still gotta be uh clipping along at a pretty good pace to get a ticket.
Looks good.
So Jim, if if the board came back and said at some point later this year, we need to balance the budget.
How am I gonna do that? Very carefully.
And and I'm not asking for like a specific play-by-play, but I I'm equally scared of deficits.
Yeah, a lot of it, uh, we would have to look at our capital project side and slowing down some of our capital purchases. Um, we might then also have to look at whether our staffing levels are appropriate.
If the projects went down? One would be contingent on the other.
Uh, no, they they they're mutually exclusive.
In other words, one way to bud, balance a budget would be to reduce areas.
I think we all can generally agree that that's probably not the right call, though.
It's not the best.
Grant applications for future projects, um, what I would see a lot in previous uh leading up to budget would be items and is just not out there as much anymore. Uh, well, I, a lot of the conversations in the past were leading up to uh grants that were lined up for the following year, and I not seen, maybe it's there and I'm not looking closely enough.
We we are continuing to apply for grants, and in fact, our grant revenue is projected to be higher than what it was projected in two thou- or budgeted in two thousand twenty-four. Um, one of the issues that we ran into, and we can talk about Home Avenue for a long time, but Home Avenue was a four hundred and fifty thousand dollar project. It's now going to approach a million dollars. Um, so it's a much more expensive project than what was anticipated. And so we're s- we're going to be spending a s- a significantly greater amount on that project. Our projections for future projects like that, we've gotten much more tighter in terms of how we're budgeting. And in that, we've also asked for more money in the in the grant process to make, you know, to offset some of that cost. But uh, Home Avenue uh is a bit of a wake-up call that we have to pay attention to that are, you know, we have some poor soils that we work work with, especially when it comes comes to streets. And um, we need to do more investigation, but they're gonna be more costly to end up doing the work.
It's not just there, it's everywhere, you know? The fire station, I did that two years ago, the parking lot. I built that in ninety-five and that lot has been there since then. We were just gonna repair it. We dug down three feet and hit water.
Yeah.
We had to go down eight feet, and that's been there for tw- since ninety-five. And was solid as a rock, and the minute we disturbed it, turned to mush.
Yep.
That's that whole area. That's why the station's got six pilings ninety feet deep. So, yeah, this soil in town is not very forgiving.
It lives up to the town's name. Silt.
Yeah. But ju- just to clarify for people at home, just because we have the one point two deficit in the budget, doesn't, we still have plenty of reserves.
We do. We have roughly set, uh, if you look at the financial report, Treasurer Tucker could probably beat me to it. Um, uh, general fund's current fund balance is about six point one million.
Okay.
So there's a significant amount of dollars that.
Yeah, the the deficit is still still bad.
Running out, because that won't last forever.
That's sustainable.
But it's not like, yeah, we're we're in the negative.
And we have been in a pattern of reducing our reserves.
Uh, actually, you haven't.
Two or three years. I thought we've reduced them intentionally.
Um, you've you've uh budgeted to reduce them, but every year uh you've ended up uh on a positive basis. If you look at going back up to my memorandum, in twenty-two, you uh budgeted a five, almost six hundred thousand dollar deficit. You actually added uh nine hundred and twenty-five thousand dollars to reserve. In twenty-three, you budgeted a one point zero nine million dollar deficit. You added six hundred and eighty thousand to reserves. I haven't gotten the projected for twenty-twenty-four yet completed. Um, but I anticipate that we'll be in a similar situation. And it's simply because we budget conservatively on the revenue side and conservatively on the expenditure side, which means we underestimate our revenues and overestimate our expenditures.
So some balancing it might just be more accurate forecasting.
I'm working on that. I would like, I would like to present you a balanced budget, not a deficit budget.
We appreciate that.
Exactly, yes, we'd love to see a balanced one. Send me.
I think what he wants from us is just the priorities, what are the projects that we wanna be? You know, especially for the projected year and deciding on the capital projects and getting those costs as much as possible.
Mm-hmm.
And I think that's a a team effort as far as getting our priorities out there, figuring out what projects come foremost and what aligns for the long ter- term. And getting those uh in the budget once it's finalized, that's what we get to sign off of.
Mm-hmm. I turn this budget over to you folks now.
Yeah, we we can tweak it.
We'll balance it.
Make changes. Well, can we, that's a challenge. But we can definitely look into the master plan as we have the budget conversations in the upcoming months. So, yeah, it's that time of the year. We all expect it. We're just gonna work through it.
Okay.
Looks good.
Anything else related to the distribution of the budget specifically?
No, looks good.
That then leads into the next. That then leads into the next item on the agenda, which is the August 2024 financial report. I will turn this over to Treasurer Tucker.
Thank you. 67% of the year has gone by. We are doing well with our anticipated revenues. We're at 73% for sales tax, 93% for use tax, about 104% for our property taxes. We are in line with the trash and water and wastewater and irrigation fees on what we were thinking we were going to have. And then the water service fees were way up at 91%. Again, like a broken record, I will say that we assumed people would slow down on their water usage, and they haven't. And we are benefiting from that. I'll answer any questions you may have.
I would point out one thing. August was the highest sales tax revenue month of the last five years.
I noticed it looked like a pretty big spike. Any idea why?
Previously, it was February '23 was the highest at $150,000. I think, I don't know if there were some delinquent sales tax remittance that caused it to spike. I don't have an answer for you, but let's hope that trend just continues.
Up and to the right.
Yes.
Numbers generally look great. Any other comments about the financial report or questions for Treasurer Tucker?
I don't have any. Thank you, Treasurer Tucker.
All right. Thank you, Amy. Next item on the agenda is manager and staff comments. I will turn this over to Manager Man.
Just a couple additions. I did look up the motorized and non-motorized grants that CPW offers, and the motorized grants are $6.4 million, and the non-motorized grants are $2 million. But right now, the non-motorized grant application process is open, so that's why we're looking at that one. Beyond that, I just want to highlight that October 9th, from 5:00 to 7:00 p.m. at the Rosalinda Event Center is the Fall Leaders Forum. Invitations went out last week. Hopefully, all of you did receive in your email that invitation, and hopefully you can attend. I am hopeful that some of you would be interested in helping us do some follow-up phone calls with folks. And if you are, let me know, and I'll get you some contact information to do a follow-up phone call. We probably, I don't know what the count is at this point, but we do have a number of people that have already confirmed that they'll be coming.
And I think I already volunteered via email, but you can sign me up.
You did volunteer to help.
All right.
I'll be eating chili that night, because I was voluntold I was doing that. It's the same night as the chili cook off.
From one to the other, just raise from one to the other.
I'll buy a rifle, do that, and try to bounce and at least catch the end of the Rosalinda event as well.
And I'll be driving from Denver that day.
It's outside, so it'll be good for after the chili.
From appointment, I'll try to be here.
We'll clear the State Patrol and the sheriffs.
I will be driving, so...
Get you an escort.
Getting...
Okay.
The more presence we can have, the better.
Yeah.
The staff appreciation party, which had previously been scheduled to be the same day, is it also being moved?
Yes.
So it will be on October 9 from 3:00 to 5:00?
Correct.
Okay.
And then, just real quickly on Home Avenue, we did, I think you saw in the packet that there, we do have a solution to our porous subsoils. We are, the Geotech solution has been approved by our engineers. We did the test sections last week, and we put some belt and suspenders on it. And we should be finishing up with the subgrade work. And then hopefully, first or second week in October, we'll end up doing the paving. So I know the folks over in Terra Subdivision and on Home Avenue specific have been patiently waiting, getting the road back. We're hopefully gonna get it to them relatively quickly.
Yes, I guess it's better to have all this headaches now than, you know, I knew road would fail in a few years, so...
Well, and we, it would have been that way if we would have just slapped pavement on it.
And we're learning from this experience for all those other streets that are coming up on the project line.
One of the, you know, one of the areas that we will look at is we'll do some potholing every 100 feet on a road project. At least that will give us an idea if we're gonna hit some bad spots. You know, we could miss the bad spots if we do every 100 feet. We would have caught this one because it was 300 feet.
At least it'll be a small bad spot if we miss it.
Right. It won't be several hundred.
And to Jerry's earlier point, once you disturb the soil, that's when you're gonna find it.
Yes.
Twenty-five years that fire trucks sat on that, $100,000, and nothing. And we dug up, they dug up six inches of asphalt, and it was a little bit, and they started digging, and it got down about two and a half, three feet, and there's water.
Yeah.
Ended up having to go down seven to eight feet, and it's been there all these years, and nothing. That's the town.
Any other questions or follow-up from the manager and staff comments? No? The next item on the agenda is updates from the board. I'll start with Trustee Poston.
Yes, just as always, thank you for the town staff for all the hard work that you guys do, and graciously. And as we approach budget season, we know that it's going to be a lot of meeting hours for all of us. So if the public wants to participate during those meetings, they are more than welcome to come in and provide us with your input. You can send out an email, or you can come in person. And, yeah, thank you for the town staff for all you do, and thank you to all the board members for all the work that we do as well.
Trustee Engler.
I don't think I have any announcements this week.
Trustee Brinton.
I'm at a loss this evening.
Trustee Clausen.
I have a few questions. The Brew Zone, are they open yet?
They're getting there. They have their temporary CO so that they can brew and prepare for their grand opening.
Oh, okay.
So I've been copying on quite a few emails back and forth with them and Public Health. So I know they're buttoning everything up and getting ready for a grand opening.
Oh, okay. Okay, yeah, it's been a while, so I was just curious.
But no ETA?
They were shooting for this week, the end of this week or beginning of next week. So that's what I'm assuming is still their goal, especially with all the emails going back and forth, that they're diligently working on everything.
Oh, okay. All right. Jumbo Storage, it doesn't look like they're doing anything currently.
They had to go back through a plan review. They had to go back through a process in front of the Planning and Zoning Commission, and they resubmitted to SHUMS. We have gotten them their review comments, and we're just waiting for them to give us their corrections.
Oh, okay. All right. All right. And I know Public Works Director Lundeen isn't here, but do we know when they're going to patch down there by the water station? You know, when they did the tie-in for the new 10-inch? Yeah, just because I see a couple steel plates down there.
I do not have an answer. We can get that answer for you and send it out.
Okay. All right. And then, and this is more for Lundeen, but for everybody else, I did notice the speed limit signs on Main Street. You know, the lighted ones, those are nice, you know? And I wasn't paying attention to them a whole lot, but where do they set at? Are they set at CDOT's 35, or do we have them set at 20?
They're set at CDOT's 35. I'm trying to remember what the range was. It's, if you're 35 or under, it says, "Thank you." If you're 35 to 40, I think it's slow down. Anything over 40, it starts flashing at you and tells you you're driving too fast.
Oh, okay. Okay. And then, on that note, you know, I've mentioned at several board meetings, the speed limit in Newcastle's 30, but I noticed it's 25 now. So they've even lowered theirs. And yes, I'm going to reiterate this, because, you know, even Glenwood Springs, I mean, it's a highway. It's a State Highway 82. That speed limit's 25. So I just do not understand why CDOT cannot allow us to lower the speed limit here.
We are continuing to work with CDOT to especially look at lowering the speed limit from just east of the roundabout at Ninth Street through the downtown core area to maybe take that down to 25.
Yeah.
And we're gonna be a little harder press, especially as you go east, because there's a lack of driveway access and a lack of...
Got you. Yes, and nothing against you or town staff, because I know you guys are trying your hardest. It's more against CDOT than anything else.
Observationally, you are absolutely correct, so we're still working towards getting that dropped.
Yeah. Okay, cool. And I did notice that the tree grates on Main Street, you know, where they're kind of girdling the trees. I've noticed that Public Works has gone out and cut them all back, so thank you to them for doing that, you know, getting those taken care of. And... What else? Oh, do we have any sort of news on Autumn Ridge, or are they just kind of...
I haven't heard of it.
Okay, I was just curious, just because it was another one that, you know, was in front of us, and then, you know, there's just been a long period of...
Yeah, I haven't heard of any movement on that one at all.
All right. And then, did we do anything with Center Townhomes Park? Because I know there's discussion of, you know, giving it back to them.
It is being discussed.
Oh, okay. So it's still in the discussion phase. Okay. All right, and I'm... Think... Oh, and then, another thing, you know, the signage at the dog park. I know you've mentioned that the town was applying for a grant or maybe or something, but I've noticed, I mean, a lot of them... Yeah, it's probably time to redo them, because on the one where it says area attractions, half those businesses don't exist anymore, you know? And I'm sure you guys are aware of that, and I'm sure that you've noticed that the others are fading, so I just didn't know if that, we could, you know, come budget season, get that in the budget. And the only other comment I had on budget would be the sidewalk on Home Avenue between Sixth and Seventh Street, because several years ago, we had a rough part of the sidewalk, and the citizens, you know, said, "Hey, can you fix this?" So the town just pulled it out, and it's been road-based ever since. So it would be nice to, you know, replace what we tore out several years ago.
I'll talk to Director Lundeen and see what the plan is.
Okay. And that's everything I have. Good job, staff and board, and thank you all.
Trustee Seifert.
I'm just gonna thank again for the speedlights. I noticed them, I think they flashed, because I looked, it flashed, and I was doing like 39. So it must flash someplace in there.
I'll see about it.
Hit the cuffs.
But it gets your attention, I'll tell you that. It does get, I noticed it right away. All of a sudden, it was working, so... Do you know anything? I had a couple people ask me, I know Misty's or whatever it's called is expanding. You know what their timeframe is on that, or when they're gonna be, or what? They took over that whole area where the realtor was, right?
They did. Yeah, they knocked out a wall and connected the two units. And they've already gone through a couple of inspections, so I know...
Is it gonna be just a still-state coffee shop, or...?
Yeah, they're gonna add part of the roastery there, so they can roast on site and then have expansive area for tables and people to sit and congregate.
There's, every time I go in there these days, there's two or three people studying, kind of like college students utilizing the spaces.
A couple people asked me, so I thought I would ask, you know, because I didn't know, so...
Yeah, it's gonna be a really great space that she's working towards right now. But they are deep into construction and have had several inspections. So I know they're really cranking through what they're trying to do over there.
I've seen them in there on the weekends as well, with people moving equipment in and out, materials in and out, trucks being pulled off on the side of the road there, and...
Yeah.
They are going to make the town smell wonderfully.
Yeah. And Sunday morning, I saw lots of people congregating there, you know, enjoying, you know, in their nice Sunday best, and so that was kind of cool. Plenty of room for all of them to sit around and enjoy each other.
Pretty of a great environment.
Yeah.
And the only other comment I had was this one to compliment that they seen the church really redid the front of that and really looks nice. They put that entryway in now, and closed all the windows up and painted that whole building and the whole parts. So really dressed it up, so it looks nice, so...
They have done a very nice job with that building.
They did. Really turned out nice, so I know some people were, but it really looks nice, so it blends in with the town now, so... That's all I got.
So my only comment is about, was walking my dog in the dog park. I don't remember what day it was last week, but somebody took it upon themselves to put a bunch of pamphlets in plastic sandwich bags and basically put them on benches, on stumps, on signs, anywhere that they felt like putting them, probably somewhere between 12 and 15. So while I was walking the dog, I was walking around picking them all up. And then apparently, well, not apparently, definitely, the person who had put them down saw me picking them up and was quite incensed that it was a freedom of speech issue. And I said, "No, it's a litter issue."
I was just gonna say, yeah.
Yeah, they were paper pamphlets in a plastic bag. Half of them had already been blown off of what they were on and were sitting on the ground. One was inches from the river. I was like, "It's not a freedom of speech issue at all. It's littering." So the reason I make this comment is that place is meant for walking dogs. If you have a message to get across to people, I think there are better ways to do it. And if you do it there, I'm gonna be behind you, picking it up and throwing it away. So I would urge you not to do it, to find a better format for getting your message out, because that isn't gonna work. And it's not the first time it's happened. I think it's at least a third for me. Okay. Next item on the agenda...
Just before we go, did we miss putting something on the agenda for you this evening, or are you just here listening in?
I'm just here to listen.
Okay, all right. I just...
Okay, perfect.
I just wanted to make sure that we didn't miss something, or you had something to say.
You have the signup sheet, Jim.
I know, but he sat here through two hours plus of a meeting.
We're fascinated. Where have you been?
Okay, all right. Well, thank you for being a member of the public in person.
It's an exclusive club.
It's an oddity to have somebody here, sadly.
All right. The next item on the agenda is an executive session for discussion of a personnel matter under CRS Section 24-6-4024-F, the Town Manager Evaluation. So we're gonna take a break while we get all that stuff ready.
Okay.
A quick break.
Please, thank you. I'll grab you some boxes.
Again? Looks like it. Sheila, we're good to go?
You're good to go on my end. I don't know if Michael has you rolling yet.
Yeah, he was just waiting for us to check with you.
Okay, yep, I'm good.
Okay. Next and last item on the agenda is adjournment.
Mr. Mayor, make a motion to adjourn.
Yeah, promoted.
I know.
Pro them.
Everybody's gonna second?
Second. Well, he didn't say it right.
Motion by Trustee Seifert to adjourn, seconded by Trustee Brinton. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Meeting is adjourned. Thank you, everyone.